All right. Welcome to this, the second meeting of the Milton Planning Board for the fiscal year 2015. And we're meeting here in the Blute Conference Room, stylishly decorated by a member of this board.
It still looks pretty good, actually.
And I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And why don't the other people at the table introduce themselves and they can make any sort of remarks that they'd like to include?
Brian Furis, member, and I also think the room is very stylish.
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Right. So we're going to meet again on August 14th, probably in the selectman's conference room. And we're going to meet again on August 28th, probably in the selectman's conference room, or, sorry, the John Cronin Conference Room. All right. We have no minutes to review, so we will pass that item and go to citizens speak. And as citizens speak, citizens who care to speak are encouraged to do so, and we are all ears. We usually wait about 10 seconds before we pass on to the next item. Okay. The next item is the, is it Curry Scenic Road?
Yeah, that said 645, though.
Okay, well, we're a little early for that. So we're going to go into the potential warrant articles discussion unless you have a better suggestion.
I'm listening to you.
All right. the article that we're going to repeat from 2014 because we got a number confusion. The town meeting enacted 20, and the ad said 21. So we're going to, we're going to try again and say 21 feet above average grade of the building footprint. This is something that we've already done, so...
So that's this one, the accessory structure height?
Yes, that's...
That's what came in your packet.
Yeah.
So let's...
I thought it looked familiar.
A single piece of paper?
Yeah. It's got article and then the dash and then at the bottom it says accessory structure height in small print.
I got it. Thank you.
Jack, is Ned coming?
I was putting on text right now.
All right. Tell him that we're moving fast.
I told him we're here.
Oh, okay.
You can make up some things to offer assistance to him.
Well, you had your chance, and that agenda item has gone by. But there'll be another chance on the 14th, so don't worry. Sign, let's just vote to submit this. The one that says to see if the town will vote to amend Section 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by striking Paragraph 1 of subsection D in section 6 and by substituting the following Paragraph 1. And I'm not going to read it, but it is exactly what we enacted two years ago, except it says 21 feet rather than the 20 feet enacted. Okay?
Been there twice.
Okay, and we've got a second. We've got a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was easy. Next, sign illumination. Now, the sign illumination provisions, and that's, is this what we've got on sign illumination, or do we have little...
You have a different one. That's just Brian's comments.
Oh, okay.
It should have been in your...
I'm sure it is. I'll dig it out.
It's in the stapled version? Yes, last page of the staple.
Last page of the staple? The Bill Clark staple?
Yes.
Well, this is not the right one.
Last page of the three-page staple, not the one starting with Plan Unit Townhouse Development.
The one on signs? No?
Yeah, the first page is on the 1950 and the building story in height.
Okay, we have, now, this is, this particular paragraph applies to the business district. So we're amending subsection C. And we're not doing a lot of work about changing section C around because it's really the selectman's article. And in fact, if the selectmen don't do for this, I mean, the idea is that we and the selectmen will jointly submit a article on illumination. And so what we would, once we work something out, we would tell the selectmen for their meeting next Monday. Is that right, Bill?
The next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
No, wait, I'm sorry, the 12th.
No, the 4th.
Right, the 4th. Everything has to be in by...
I understand that. But their meeting is on the 4th, isn't it?
It's early, it's early on the 4th.
In any event, the selectmen are meant to, are, the idea is that we're not going to submit this ourselves if the selectmen don't go along with it because it's their, it's their article. So, Brian, you have some comments on this?
Do. So first, there's a reference here to cutting off or lights overflowing onto neighboring properties. Illumination shall be shielded or directed so it does not shine directly onto neighboring properties. We should also, I recommend that we also include a shielding from night sky to cap the light above.
Are you looking for, are you looking for the dark sky provisions?
Basically.
Because the technical term is dark sky rather than night sky.
Yes, right.
Okay. I noticed that on one of the other...
Is there a specific dark sky provision that's accepted? Is there, or is there...
There's legislation that you can accept into your local bylaws, which we haven't done. But if you refer to dark sky standards, you can find those.
Okay.
That would be specific, yeah.
That's the verb, verb, I would propose, then. Then, I noticed that the Board of...
And shall meet dark skies, dark skies standards?
Dark sky standards, yeah. And I believe dark and sky are capitalized.
And shall meet... dark skies. That's capitalized?
Sky, singular. Yeah, dark, sky, singular, both capitalized.
Standards.
Standards. I think standards is lowercase.
Yeah. Okay, the other one?
I note that the Board of Selectmen have the opportunity to authorize signs with moving parts or text which have no adverse impacts. Certainly, I'm not in favor of signs with moving parts, but that I can, we can leave for debate. However, I do think that if we are going to let the sign change, I think we should limit the number of times the sign can change per minute. And I would like to see the changing text or changing image, whatever it is, be as a single frame as opposed to an animated or a transitional sliding nature. That's, I've seen similar bylaws in other communities that when you do allow the electronic signs or the electronic messaging, it's, they try to keep it as a more static transition.
Do you have a recommendation on how many times?
I'd be interested in hearing just quickly what other people think about the moving parts. That may be more than we want to tackle if we want the Board of Selectmen to hear it. For the other portion, I would say, design may authorize signs which display moving parts or text so long as the moving parts or text are moved, shall change, so, I wrote, shall change in a frame manner and not via effect or transition. That would be my proposed language.
Well, my view is that we say no moving parts and no changing message and no changing text or appearance, but the selectmen can in their regulations, I mean, they do have a, what is their book called, Bill?
Design Guide Book.
So that would be something we'd want to put into the design guidebook, then?
Yeah.
I think it's...
I agree with that.
It can be more specific than that, yeah.
I agree with that.
You put your technology components into the design guidebook. You don't put your technology into your zoning.
I agree with that.
Okay. So, we'll change and shall meet dark sky standards in F, and we'll leave G and see what the selectmen do. Okay? So we have that motion?
Submit.
And we have a second, I think, Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We might as well, while we're on signs, do the residential sign one, and then we'll do, then we'll do the...
Did you give us the residential sign?
Condominium one. Well, then we'll do our condominium committee, and then we'll do the condominium one.
You gave it to us in, with Brian's comments. You didn't give it to us in our packet.
Right.
Now, once again, the selectmen, the way I saw it is that where we say that these things can be illuminated by, without authorization by the selectmen, I assume that the selectmen would, you know, say American flags have to be lit and they're displayed all night, you know, the usual.
Again, relying on the design guidebook or...
Right, exactly.
That's, I'm fine with that again.
Because I, I mean, I think that, let's give them something to do.
I'm okay with all of that. I'm okay with that comment.
Isn't that good, Bill? Isn't that what we're here for? They're going to have to...
Give them, them. Who's them?
The Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I thought you were referring to the sign review committee.
Oh, I have a change.
Uh-oh.
I want to say signs of not more than three square feet acknowledging private maintenance of public spaces is authorized by the Board of Selectmen. This is the, this island is maintained by...
Where are you, are you putting that under N?
It would be...
Or under 4?
It would be, it would be, yeah, it would be...
A temporary sign?
It would be N.
So that's a permanent sign? That's just signs...
Oh, I was going to also say so long as the maintenance, something like so long as the maintenance is actually being conducted.
So what's your language again?
During the period, during the period of such maintenance, how about?
Okay. So can you read the whole sentence again?
Signs of not more than three square feet acknowledging private maintenance of public spaces is authorized by the Board of Selectmen during the period of, of... I had an S word, and I...
Such, period of such maintenance.
Of such maintenance, yeah. And then I said seasonal greetings. Merry Christmas?
Under temporary signs?
I think so. It would be...
So nine?
It would be...
I thought that was a...
In the ban, holiday and seasonal decorations...
Do we consider decorations as signs?
What? Well, they, the definition of signs is something that calls one attentions. I mean, I'll read you what it says, what it is.
Yeah, that's, because that would actually goes back to my first comment about something that's displayed in a yard that can be seen from a neighbor's property.
A sign, the sign, word sign, whether, I was going to, I was going to redo the definition, and then I...
You realize that life isn't long enough.
Well, I just realized you can, you, the word sign, whether exterior or interior, permanent or temporary, means any object, board, placard, paper, symbol, banner, streamer, letter, number, emblem, logo, color, display or light, or any combination thereof which identifies or attracts attention to any property or premises or provides information. And I guess, does it attract attention to a property?
Doesn't provide information. I'm not sure we want to be in the business of regulating holiday lights, do we?
But seasonal decorations. We allow those things.
Right.
Holiday and seasonal decorations are allowed.
Oh.
And I was just going to add, and seasonal greetings.
Okay.
So we're only allowing them for 60 days? That's would be my, to Emily's point, are we, are we getting ourselves into a business of special services departments?
Right, if somebody puts out their holiday decorations on November 1st and doesn't take them down until February.
But you've driven down the Jamaica way, haven't you? Right. I've been, that's the...
I'm familiar with your reference.
All right, seasonal greetings. I mean, that's Thanksgiving through January 15th.
Okay.
Seasonal decorations, but that's only Christmas. You've got the people who decorate for Valentine's and Easter and Red Sox season and...
They can do that, as long as they change the decoration.
I'm just making sure that, yeah, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, all of those. I just want to make sure that we're not restricting people's rights to do their seasonal decorations.
No, this is, this is actually, this is, this is okay, I think. I think this is, this is broad. And it just means those Christmas lights have to come down sometime. Or they don't. I mean, I don't know.
I have a feeling we're going to get a little pushback on this one.
Well, we may get a number of pushbacks, but, okay. So do I give this to you, Bill, or do I keep it? I guess I give it to you.
I bet you do.
Now, any other, someone, I think that the Board of Selectmen had a comment. Okay, yeah, they, she makes the point that up at the top, where I just say by substituting the following Paragraph 3, initially, Paragraph 4 was part of Paragraph 3, but someone changed it into a separate paragraph without telling me. So at the beginning, we'll say by substituting the following Paragraph 3 in its place and by adding the following Paragraph 4. And then there's a double period that has to be fixed.
I caught that one.
A Board of Selectmen. She, Katie says signs of not, this is G, signs of not more than five square feet and maintained, take out the word and, maintained for public safety, for public welfare or for public convenience by the town. And I would say that no parking, yield, I mean, just whatever the town really wants to do.
You have an extra letter under J next to the last line, far right. You need to take the W out, approved by the...
Katie was suggesting that temporary signs might be 45 days, but I think 60 is right.
45 is what we have now.
Yeah.
I think 60 is right. But you have to remember, what we have now is that the only signs allowed in a resident district are temporary signs.
Right. We are now authorizing certain other signs that people, some people have up anyway, are now authorized, yeah.
Right, but all I'm saying is that if all the signs in the residential districts that are up there are only erected for 45 days at track, I'll eat my head.
Want salt with that?
Yeah, really.
There are certain people who take and make, they send their letter in every 30 days so that they have their 45-day signs that they just change up.
Well, they might have had a great deal, 60 days. Unless the selectmen say 45 days.
Okay, I have another one that goes with that. What about A-frame signs?
What about them?
We don't have them.
We say signs can be two-faced.
Do we have A-frame, A-frame signs in residential districts currently?
We don't typically allow it, but we have them.
Okay.
How do you want to address that?
I think that they're okay.
It isn't addressed.
As long as they...
Why would you say it isn't addressed here?
It's silent. But it doesn't say anything about having A-frame signs.
But it doesn't say?
Doesn't say what type of signs they're talking about. I mean, it doesn't say if this is a post sign or a sign stuck on the side of a house or...
It doesn't.
So if somebody has a A-frame sign, their business is in a residential district, they get a permit for it for 60 days. At the end of 60 days...
Where does it say they can do that?
Dig it up.
It's a temporary sign.
I understand, but where is it a permitted temporary sign?
Why is it not if it's three square feet?
Because it's a business, it's...
Oh, well, yeah, the intention of the sign is different. I'm just talking about the type of sign that Phil talked me for.
I mean, it would have to fit into either E or F, which are the non-conforming uses and special permits by the Board of Appeals provisions.
You're saying you'd have to get a special permit to have a business sign in a residential district?
Yeah, except we grandfather, we, Al says signs lawfully erected and maintained prior to October, whenever the thing gets enacted. I mean, the question is going to be what's being lawfully maintained with it? But that's for the building inspector. He's a, he's a, he's like solemn.
He kicks them to me. I try to get you to do them, you kick them back.
Ben's puts up A-frame signs. Ben's puts up an A-frame sign, but it's just it.
Yeah, I was going to say that's...
By the day.
Yeah.
There's one at the moment at the corner of Reed's Dale and Canton Avenue about the blood drive.
That's, that's more or less addressed in here, isn't it? It's informational.
Yeah, that would be, that would be under an event. Signs you can notice at an event.
Yeah.
But, yeah, my only point was that the A-frame, I don't think, it's not necessarily not addressed here, it's just the type of sign.
I wouldn't worry about an A-frame. It's going to be in the yard, it's not going to be on the sidewalk.
A-frames in the business district on the sidewalk would be more difficult to discuss.
I mean...
We've actually had that issue.
Right.
And we actually made one of the buildings on Adams Street take the sign and put it in, into the cutoff for their front door.
Yeah.
Because now it's off of the sidewalk. But there are others who come in and put them...
Then it becomes potentially an access issue, yeah.
Onto the sidewalk.
And some communities allow that.
We're, again, we're only talking residential here, right?
Right, exactly. That's a question for another one.
This is just the residential area. I mean, I don't, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't...
I've got two or three calls, which I'm...
If they're, what?
I said I actually have two or three calls about A-frames right now, so...
In the residential districts?
Yep. So what you're doing, I'm actually going to use tomorrow.
You should report this to the selectmen.
Well, the size and the period of time and everything is addressed here, right?
Yeah, they put an A-frame, A-frame, A-frame sign up within the use that's allowed with this, in the sign inspection.
And it's there for 60 days?
And it's there for 60 days, they're allowed to do it.
Yeah.
Whether it's a post sign, an A-frame sign, a vinyl sign stuck to a fence.
We haven't allowed it in the guidebook, so now we're kind of getting away.
Well, that pushes you to the guidebook, and that's, that's where you would determine what type of sign is allowed.
Exactly, and how you want.
So that's a different conversation.
If you want to say something about the type of sign shall be...
No, I think the type of sign should be in the guidebook.
Oh, here it says that the board's review shall include the proposed design content and construction of the sign.
There you go. And that's in accordance with the guidebook, right?
Yeah, exactly. I agree.
Okay, she has a couple of comments in little I, little 1, little Roman numeral 1.
4, 41, yeah.
That one real estate sign pertaining, she says, she wants to say after the Board of Selectmen or its designee should be able to extend the permissible time because she thinks that Anne Marie is going to be doing this.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to extend the period of time for a real estate sign? Is that what we're getting at?
Right, Anne Marie can extend the time for a real estate sign.
We don't do real estate signs.
I understand that, but if it's a temporary sign, which it is, it's going to be, it's going to be extended. Or they put up a new one. I don't know.
So you're changing it to one real estate sign pertaining rather than permitting?
She wants pertaining, yeah.
And then adding on line, starting at the end of line 3, that the Board of Selectmen or its designee shall upon application.
Yeah, yeah. Should two have the same signed dimensions as three, is what she says.
On the...
Two is a real estate sign, three are political signs.
Two, one is a real estate sign, two is constitutionally protected free speech, which I have a question about that, and three is political signs.
Okay, you make the point, you make a good point, and we're going to, why don't you make it?
So on 42, there's, on the third line down on the second page, it starts to say, it says if there shall be more than one such sign, they shall be spaced at 50 feet apart, then after that, no such sign shall be located within 20 feet of a common lot line. That means that in residency only, you would be restricted to one sign, but the others, other residential areas would be able to have more than one sign. So just take out if there shall be more than one such sign, those shall be spaced at 50 feet apart. The 20 foot of a common lot line still protects the neighbors from having signs right up against their property, but it doesn't mean that residency is unfairly restricted from the other residential areas.
Okay, I think that that sounds right. I think that sounds right. I hadn't thought of that. But all in all, I think that, you know, if the selectmen are happy, I think that I will, I will add...
Could I introduce a new nuance here? I'd like to prohibit a certain type of sign, not the content. The type of sign is what is called a sale sign.
A what?
It's known in the business as a sale sign. I call it a sign company today. It's those things that look like big feathers.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yes, okay.
He said to me, most cities and towns have banned them, however, we have not. If you go down to Providence or Allen and see what...
Flag, right?
Yeah, flag, sale signs, like that.
Yeah.
If you want to see how horrendous they can be, go down to Providence where they're everywhere.
But like open?
No, it's one piece, Al.
No, but I mean, you go by the nursery and they say...
It could say, it could say open, it could say sale, it could say...
Or it could say big sale.
Yeah.
It could say this stinks, but prohibited in most towns, cities and towns according to...
But that, you see, would be the business, the business use, and it would be the selectmen.
I think we could, does our design handbook, does it prohibit certain types of signs? Can we put that in there?
We could put it in there.
That seems like, again, a great, I think we should put it in there.
I agree, I think we ought to. That's a really good point.
Let's stick with it.
Yeah, put that in the design book so that it's a prohibited sign.
That's great.
Yeah, I saw one of those up around town the other day, and I was thinking, wow.
You're off, you got off.
Dancing men.
Okay, with those few changes?
That helps, thank you.
So moved, as amended.
Becca?
Sorry, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, why don't the people who are interested, oh, let's do our committee.
Do you want, we're past the public hearing.
What?
Do you want to do the hearing for Curry?
Oh, we have to do our public hearing.
Yeah, then we can go back to our articles.
Then we'll go back. I just got so wrapped up in those, I forgot about the public hearing.
Senate articles are so much fun.
Senate articles are great, aren't they?
I'm going to lose this thing there. You're losing something over here, but why is it?
Something, right.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks for waiting all that time. I hope that you, you saw, you can take a look at the sign by law because I actually went to Curry College, and I must say, you've got an impressive grouping of signs up there. And we've made it so that they're all, they're all going to be just fine. So now, the Historical Commission, please come and join us and tell us what you think of this application.
Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission.
Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission laments what's going on on Brushhill Road at the Curry property. It's forever changing the streetscape and the orientation of these historic buildings towards the street. Having said that, we think the best option going forward is to close the openings in the walls. The curbstone entrance to 1,000 has already been smashed by construction equipment. One of the entrances to 1016 has already been compromised by construction equipment. Beyond saying that we think the wall ought to be closed, I don't think we can do a whole lot better in suggestions than what the Brushhill Neighborhood Association has already done in terms of suggesting uniformity insofar as possible with the existing wall of size of stones, color of stones, appropriate color of mortar. I think the board received that in detail last time. We really can't do much beyond that in terms of suggestions. We would hope and expect that the, all of the wall would be addressed. About 20 feet to the right of the existing right-hand driveway to 1016 is a missing piece of wall where a tree stump has rotted out. I would assume that that would also be included in the attention to the wall. As far as the vertical stones are concerned at the entrances to 1016, the commission is really ambivalent. Yes, they're nice stones, and yes, I expect they could be incorporated into the wall as is. However, what you end up with is a wall running for many hundreds of feet along Brushhill Road, showing where a driveway used to be, but now it's closed. So is there really any point in maintaining that vertical stone? On the other hand, the present vertical stones, as I recall, are just about the height of the existing wall on either side, so we don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference whether those vertical stones remain or not. It would seem that a new wall could be built including them. If they were removed and perhaps turned sideways and incorporated into the closing sections of the wall, we don't see a problem either way. Our concern is that when the wall is done, when the work is done, it all looks as if it's been there 100 years. The right column mortar, which hasn't always happened, certainly we recall it would require more care on the part of a mason or a stone wall building expert, but we think the end result would be much more beneficial to the town and to the neighbors.
All right, now, Bill, what do your notes show that we are the specs for this?
You're talking about the infill of the wall?
Well, just-
I suggest that you go back and have the lawmakers, what presentation does he have, and then I'll-
Okay, from the Neighborhood Association or from the?
Curry themselves.
From the Curry?
Yeah.
The re-present?
I don't know that it's re-present, but it's to address the issues that we brought up at that last meeting.
All right, you remember the issues.
So, again, I have some renderings, and I can walk you through them very quickly.
Okay, make the renderings, put them, okay, yes, do so.
So this is the existing wall section. These are the large stones that stick up. They are proud of the wall. They do stick up higher than the existing wall, so they would stick out. We propose to oppose the wall, infill the wall from, in three locations. This is the location to the left of 1016 Brushhill Road. This is the location at 1,000 Brushhill Road, our current admissions building with the fancy gate, Ryan Gate. And then to the left of that is the third location, which is-
Why don't you pick up the microphone, just sort of hold it? They say to gather.
So, again, this is the third location. If you were coming up Brushhill Road from Paul's Bridge, this is actually be your first location that you would see with 1016 Brushhill Road in the background. These large stones that stick up to the right of this location is the location of the rotted-out tree that the wall was, went around originally. We had spoken to the fact that we would infill these walls with matching stone from the site. We would match the mortar mix. We've spoken with the mason in regards to getting some growth on the wall by using some material that's available, including a buttermilk mixture and some enzymes that will get the moss to grow. And we would commit to filling in that piece of wall downstream and repair along this section of the wall as well. When we had the last meeting, we had not heard back from the Historic Commission. At that meeting, I suggested that I would reach out to Steve O'Donnell, which I did. We have a very pleasant conversation in regards to both the wall, a piece of the wall that had been restored recently at the curb of Dana Rav where a vehicle had hit it, and seems to get hit every three or four years, at that location, at the corner of Dana Rav. And I spoke to him about being more diligent as we make repairs on the wall with mortar mixing to have it match. So basically, the item that was up in the air, and I asked Steve his thoughts on it, were the upright pillars. The college had recommended that they be removed for strength because when you finger in a wall as opposed to having abutments and then a sectional wall, it actually is stronger. I don't think this wall is going to get hit, and if you were to say, well, we like it that way, I'm fine with that. The college would be fine with that. So as far as leaving them there, if it's historic significance, we're fine. If it's filling it in, we're fine. The initial recommendation to close this was a neighborhood recommendation. As I had said at the last meeting, we did circle around with the fire department particularly, and they were okay with it as long as we created some access and some hydrants on campus. And we came here because the road is on, partially on public property, partially on the college property, and we thought it was fitting to come in and ask permission to close this on, close this section up, although normally people that come here are looking to open up sections of the wall. And that's basically, I believe, where we left off.
Okay, now, Tim, is this anything beyond that?
No, one additional item, but if I could just comment on this, I will leave the decision to let you with the rocks up to the Historic Commission box.
Okay, the Historic Commission said they're conflicted. I personally think they should go. What do you think?
The suggestion about putting them vertical, integrating them into the stone wall in some form and just leaving them vertical.
Why not put them somewhere else? They look like they're cut square. Are they square?
No, they're pretty round.
I'd rather see a consistent.
I would as well. I'd like to see a consistent.
If you want to take the use in someplace else, put them down at one of the ends.
Right, exactly.
At Atherton Street on either side.
How about Atherton Street on either side? I don't know.
Use it.
We'll use them some way.
Seen the rocks? I have.
Nothing very special.
I think it would look more appealing just to be consistent rather than to have the old driveway kind of framed out.
I agree. My personal opinion would be the same, but.
We're just wondering whether you should get rid of them or relocate them to a friendlier climb.
Or just hide them in back of the-
Well, we might be able to use them as a sitting rocks.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, that sounds really nice.
Very similar to footing or something.
Sitting rocks.
Sitting rocks.
That's good.
Anything else, Tim?
Yes, at the last meeting, you had asked me to follow up with some wording. In the memo that I passed around to you, I suggested that the college, while they're working on the wall, just clean up some of the brush at one of the end, and you asked me, what's that mean? So I took the liberty to respond. Thanks, Tim. Nope, I don't have one.
Well.
I guess you did.
At the previous meeting of planning board, Mr. Whiteside asked me to prepare a phraseology which would reasonably establish a plan or guideline for managing the vegetative growth along roadways where a stone wall abuts the roadway right of way, such that the vegetation over time does not negatively impact the stone wall. We see this happening all over the place, so I'm hoping this is a little bit more of a broad-brush approach. The following is extracted with minor changes from a prior plan we submitted to this board for the Boyle property development a couple of years ago. Roadside vegetation management for protecting, protection of stone walls. The purpose of this guideline is to establish vegetation management practices which foster the scenic value and preservation of stone walls by preventing vegetative growth of trees, vines and shrubs from negatively impacting the visual quality of the stone wall and from physically damaging the stone wall by disrupting its foundation and otherwise dislodging stones. A stone wall shall, A, a stone wall shall be at all times free and clear of vines and shrub growth. Growth which obscures the view from the road shall be cut back or otherwise removed or killed. B, wind-blown leaves which accumulate on either side of the wall shall be removed as they may over time, hide the wall, support vegetation which will further degrade the wall. C, any vine, shrub or tree species whose trunk or root system threatens the integrity of the stone wall structure shall be killed or removed, and this further identifies what those trees may be. Any tree growing behind a stone wall whose center is within 18 inches of the face of the stone wall shall be removed before its diameter reaches 2 inches. All this is designed to try to make sure that the growth of the tree doesn't begin to degrade the stone wall itself. So whether these measures are correct or not, I'm not sure, but they're what I've been sort of able to observe up and down the road. Two, any tree species growing behind a stone wall whose center is between 18 and 36 inches from the face of the wall shall be removed from its diameter in inches equals 1/4 of the distance between the center of the face of the wall as measured in inches. I know this is getting a little crazy, but need to find some way to measure it. For example, if the center of a tree is 24 inches from the face of a stone wall, once its diameter reaches 6 inches, it must be removed. Any tree species growing behind a wall whose center is greater than 36 inches from the face of the wall may remain standing, and the stone wall should be visually monitored for signs of potential damage. Efforts to mitigate damage to the wall shall be taken. Four, shrub species may be allowed to grow within 36 inches of a stone wall provided its root systems and trunks do not threaten the integrity of stones. And five, any tree species growing in front of the stone wall and whose trunk is within 12 inches of the wall shall be removed. It's assumed that any tree more than 12 inches from the face of the wall is a public safety issue and would be removed by DPW. And six, nothing in this section implies that existing trees will exceed limits, which exceed these limits, shall be removed. However, as best as possible, the stone wall shall be protected from damage by their trunks and root systems. And nothing in this section shall be taken to supersede any state, local or federal shade tree act or other such regulation.
All right, well, you have set forth an interesting group of standards. We actually, on the planning board, love like trees, and I think that you may be being a little excessive in respect to them, but I think that we should send this over to the tree warden, Bill, because he is our man, and get some comments. Because we may, we do have scenic road regulations, and it is perfectly reasonable for us to have some guidelines. These may not be the guidelines we end up with, but that's for another day.
Well, I do recognize the need to keep trees, and I certainly agree with that. I'm just, from the observations that I've had, once these roots get going, they'll just destroy the stone wall. So the idea is just to make that, provide that process.
In my neighborhood, we have lots of stone walls, and they, of course, are not like your stone wall. They're just piles of rocks. They move very, very easily. In any event, we hear you, and obviously, we don't want your good work to be undermined by-
In addition, I'm sure that Bob knows what could happen with that stone wall, and will do what he thinks is-
All right, shall we? Bill, shall you and I put together a decision authorizing Curry to do this work as described?
Yes.
Okay, I see a motion.
And you're going to incorporate the conditions as discussed, I guess, from the Brushhill memo? It looks like conditions 2 through-
Which conditions?
I believe it's 2 through 5 or 2-
From there, from theirs and the Historic Commission and the decisions here.
Right, and so from Brushhill Neighborhoods-
Okay, the large stones are going to be sitting stones.
So it's 2 through 5, I believe.
Border, yeah, exposed border joints.
6, 2 through 6.
Border material, infill material.
And do you want to close?
The places of repair are specified.
I think number 6 is beyond what the college is, we said that we would do this. However, it cannot be, I do not believe it can be put in a condition.
Because it's not part of the project.
Correct.
I think that's right.
That's right.
But you're going to, we may mention that, we may mention that if, while you've got the mason there, you might-
Be perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
So do you want to close the hearing tonight, Alex?
I think I'd like to have Bill send out the decision.
Okay, and then close it at our next meeting.
Well, I guess we could, the 14th, Curry probably isn't going to do anything before the 14th. We can have a decision for you by the 14th.
You're still using the entrances today, right?
The gas is going in today, then we have-
No, I mean, you're not going to do the wall before the 14th, are you?
We'll be, close to that date, we'll be starting it, so that's fine. We can live with that. We can, you know, it's been open all these years. A few more days, we're starting landscaping on the 18th. The infill of the wall will be right around that time, so we can make that work.
So we're going to commit to the 14th with a-
So continue the hearing until 6:45 on the 14th?
I think that we should have closed the hearing. And you can, you don't, you know how much fun these meetings are, and you can come if you like. But we will sign the decision, and we'll probably try and get it over to you by email beforehand. If you leave Bill your email address.
No problem.
In that case, I move we close the hearing.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now. We have a proposed Milton condominium townhouse development working group. And the proposal is that the members are as follows. Alex Whiteside, co-chairman, Brian Furz, co-chairman, Marion McHathrick, Ned Corcoran, John Cronin, a representative of the Brushhill Neighborhood Association, a representative of the Hillside Neighborhood Association, and a representative of the Indian Cliffs Neighborhood Association, Cheryl Togias, and a real estate person with condo experience yet to be named. Yes.
Have you asked the people who are named on the list if they're interested in serving?
Marion indicated she was interested. Ned is here, and I don't see him jumping up and down. John Cronin. John Cronin, and the representatives of the neighborhood associations are, we've got Tucker Smith, who is going to be our, the Brushhill representative. Cheryl is a good sport, and-
We have none. I don't think I've asked anyone.
Brian and I are both agreeable. So that gets us pretty close to the real estate person with condo experience.
And the other two neighborhood associations?
I'm Canton Ave.
What?
I'm Canton Ave.
You're not Brushhill?
No.
We had originally started them, but they seceded from us.
I do think Canton Ave should be included because of carburey.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Representative of Canton Ave Neighborhood, is that how it's called? Canton Ave Neighborhood Association?
Well, we're not official yet, we're informal.
Well, why don't you do it? Get official. Or, okay, we'll just put you on, Tucker.
Well, we used to be.
Tucker, Tucker, well, just put on Tucker Smith.
I said I volunteer.
Okay. What do you think?
Well, I think it should be subject to agreement by the neighborhood associations that they want to send a representative, obviously, and by the other named people on here that they wish to serve. I'm a little leery about nominating people to serve before we've actually spoken to them.
This is creating subject, of course, to acceptance, and.
Oh, I wasn't raising my hand, but is this a public committee, or is this a working group? Okay, it will be posted, okay.
Safer that way.
Yep, I just was curious.
Public gets to listen in, and you don't have to worry about.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
No issue with that.
So, shall we do it?
And do we have a charge for this group yet? Other than looking at the idea of condominiums, are they going to, do you have a timeline? Do you have a charge?
We will develop, Brian, and I will develop a charge, and we'll, we'll give it to you.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Aye. The working group is established. Now, we're going to go to the zoning for the St. Pius property, which is called Planned Unit Townhouse Development. And Tim, you have, you have made some late comments, and, and bear in mind, this is something that is going to go for a public hearing, and it will be heard, and the warrant committee will consider it, and that we have to get this to the selectmen quickly. And so it isn't the time to get too excited about whatever your concerns may be, because there is some thought, by me particularly, that perhaps you should have aired these concerns a little sooner than today, because I seem to recall that you were here during some of our discussions of this particular proposal.
Is that Gabe? Hi, Gabe. We didn't hear Gabe.
That is true.
Thanks, Gabe.
Sort of apologize to Ned, my bad, for not communicating this particular piece with them ahead of time, and I don't mean to send any surprises your way, so bear with me. When we met with the developer in end of May, early June, there was an agreement that we would have a subsequent meeting to, to further discuss, discuss some of the issues. That meeting never took place, and so we feel that there were some items that were left off the table a little bit. And it's unfortunate, because some of those may or may not have, have entered into the discussion about the bylaw. I do recognize that, that it's, it's, it's late in the game, but I think that this is a precedent-setting bylaw, and I think it's important to, to get it right and get the issues on the table, so I, I offer them. And if I just begin on the second paragraph here of my memo that I passed around, we're also frustrated by the fact that key zoning issues are handled in the summer months, where it's very difficult to find common meeting times for neighbors to meet and discuss issues facing the neighborhood. We'd ask the planning board to reevaluate this policy. My specific, or our.
You like the Christmas time meetings, right?
Granted, there's no, no good time, but this has been very frustrating. I know, you know, everybody's all over the map on vacations, and I know that no time is good time, but it is, it is unfortunate that we take the summer months to deal with zoning issues when.
The wonderful thing about email is that people can put their opinions into writing, and they can communicate them instantly with numerous other people.
Well, that, that.
In any event, you made your point that we shouldn't be doing our work in the summer, we should be vacationing.
Well, that, that.
Is that a motion?
All in favor?
But, you know, this stuff is, I think this stuff is serious stuff, and it just gets frustrating when all the neighbors have a hard time getting together, because talking about these things in person is very different than doing it in email. So with that, let me continue. Open space, the use of the term open space as used in this bylaw with respect to the parcel is inappropriate. The term open space implies larger areas that can be, that can be attributed, larger areas then can be attributed to this parcel, and therefore should be removed from the bylaw. Density, a density of four point five units per acre is, apologize for the typo, is thirty-six units on the property. Some neighbors have argued that this is too high and in direct conflict with the immediate housing density. A density of this nature inhibits a height, a site plan which would allow the developer to lend an extended perspective to the lower density while in fact exceeding the neighborhood density average. We are suggesting a modest reduction that would improve the quality of living of future residents and open more land and soften the visuals from Brushhill Road. If you look at a map of the property, there's a little tail of the property that sticks out up towards Cushing. On the back of the property, there's a two point two acre lot which connects the main lot to Cushing Road.
Is that two point two, sorry, it says point two-two, is it?
Point two-two, yeah, I'm sorry, yep. This lot is about twenty-five feet wide, and it's effectively isolated from the main lot, and therefore should be disregarded as so described for wetlands in section six and considered unusable. And my question to you is, does this strip qualify as narrow in your section eleven C? In terms of rental, the rental restriction seven, section four, is not strong enough. It needs to be framed in such a way as to prevent rental to local college students. Rental units shall not be sublet and must not, must be occupied by the rentee.
Well, you understand that zoning does not zone occupancy, and does not, so, and it also doesn't zone, I mean, what do you got is a lot more than what some people might think you are entitled to.
Well, let me, let me finish, and then let's discuss that.
I, I, okay.
Just, from a height-wise, I believe that the height of the proposed new structures will be less than thirty-five feet, and thus suggests that the bylaw lower the limit, the height limit for the new townhouses, to the, to, to the height of one and a half stories, which is what's being proposed. And then finally, in addition, since this development is to be connected to town sewer, and given that there have been a history of problems with the Milton Street connection to the MWRA sewer line, we believe this is a good time to seek assessment from MWRA relative to the Milton Street connection.
What sort of an assessment?
Capacity, what are the problems?
I thought you were thinking a financial assessment on the abutters.
No, 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 just a, just an evaluation by MWRA in terms of what are the problems down at that intersection with Milton Street where the local town sewer dumps into the MWRA pipe? There, there odor problems down there, Bill's more familiar with them than I, but a number of residents thought that this would be a good time to look at that, and wondering what, you know, whether there's a capacity issue.
I think, look, that's fine. I think that, Bill, would you write the MR, MWRA, and tell them to get down there and take a look at it? Is that what you do?
I actually.
You don't know what you do.
I leave it in your hands, that would be great if Bill would be there.
He thinks the sewer may go the other way, but that may be the problem, Tim.
Maybe.
It's not going, it's not going to Milton Street, it's going the other way.
Think so?
I know so, because that's where Brushhill, Walcott's coming from that direction, so it doesn't go down. It doesn't, from Walcott down, there is no connection. It goes the other way.
Thank you, all right.
All right. So I've, I've told you about, you know, trying to zone occupancy as a slippery slope, and I read this, and I said, even though I, what, somewhat, somewhat, I thought it was, it was as much as you could possibly expect, because you really can't zone occupancy, and, and saying no Curry students in this town.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that.
You do want to suggest that.
What I'm trying to suggest, what I'm trying to get away from is a case where a flock of Curry students come in there to rent the, rent units there and, and disrupt the nature of, of what the whole design is intended for in the first place.
Well, I hear that, but they're going to be two-bedroom units, so unless that, unless, you know, they're going to.
All, all we're suggesting is that it would be really nice if there was a way to, to, to put some criteria in there that would minimize the chances of something like that happening.
All right, well, you, you did put some criteria in there to minimize the chances. And I think that, you know, what went, that went in because you wanted it in, it wasn't because the developer wanted it.
Didn't the developer tell us the design intent was to attract a mature crowd, if you will, empty nesters?
Also, I think legally, yeah.
I mean, I think you can attract people, but you certainly can't say we can discriminate against.
No, 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 no.
Legally, you have to be very careful on, on that.
Right, I recognize that.
Yeah.
Of course, of course you may. We, we were wondering when you would, when you would finally say something to us.
I would let you and, and Tim have first crack. Ned Corcoran on behalf of Northland Residential, which is the developer here. First of all, we've met six times with neighbors in one forum or another, starting on April first. On April first, we met with the director abutters, and we presented a plan that had fifty-two units. There was concern about density, we went back, and we came back on April fifteenth. We had a site walk and a second meeting at St. Pius, the tenth church, at which point we presented a plan that had thirty-six units. The plan has been consistent through the following four meetings and several meetings with the planning board, that thirty-six units is the number. And the rep, the representation made at several of those meetings was that if it was not going to be, we didn't have the ability to zone at thirty-six, that we're going to pursue another alternative, an alternative means of development. Because thirty-six is a sufficiently large number to allow a reasonable return while also providing four affordable units on a ten percent basis. And it is capable of, of, of financing a significantly valuable site plan. And I think what we really heard from the abutters, although there's been some who have suggested that maybe the unit count should be lower, maybe it's, should be something else, we've really heard more about the fact that they should focus on a high-quality site plan, focus on the notion of an evolved estate, something that takes this and brings, with density, that really responds and respects the neighborhood with setbacks, with site planning, responds to the fact that there's high density on the, on the Boston side of the line with respect to the housing authority. So four and a half units per acre is the number. And I've said this, we've said this in many occasions to the, in every meeting, we're not going below that number.
Were you going to go thirty-six is the number?
Thirty-six units is the number.
And four point five floor, eight acres?
Correct.
Is the number.
And we've adjusted, and, and we've, we've adjusted that. But it's thirty-six units, including two townhouses and a restored historic building. There's costs associated with doing that, and so the density is necessary to achieve everything else that's being requested. The issue on rental, I'm not sure how it went from eighteen months to twelve months. I think the, the draft that I originally produced said that there would be a minimum rental term of eighteen months, and I think it got switched to twelve somehow. So we're fine with an eighteen-month limitation on rental. That may do more to address issues, neighbor issues about Curry College, because they're going to be looking at it one school year at a time, so I think that would be fine. And I know that Rick Franklin, who lives directly abut and lives on the corner of Dana Avenue, had also reminded us that he was interested in language about second-floor windows and direction of second-floor windows, that they ought not face directly out of abutters, so that the, the way that the buildings have been sighted on the site plan are sort of skewed, so there is no direct appearance. But that would be an, an added language that he has requested, and we'd, we'd be fine with. But I think in general, you know, we've worked hard, we've worked really hard with the neighbors, we've worked hard with this board, and we have, but we have been consistent on a unit count that was necessary to achieve everybody's goals. And so that's where we need to be. Everything else is fungible. But I think the bylaw's a good one. I know that different people have different issues about different things, not everybody agrees on every point in it. We've swallowed hard on a couple of things, and everybody else has to swallow as well. But I think it's a, I think it's a good bylaw, it does well by the town, it does well by the neighbors. It is zone the site plan, which is what we do, but that's what we, that's what we do until the committee comes up with an alternative approach that's acceptable by town meeting standards. And I would encourage the board to, to recommend the bylaw as it's, as it is presented, version seven dash twenty-nine, St. Pius, that Bill put the, the bottom on, we, I would ask, urge the board to present that, the, to the planning, to the board of selectmen, and then certainly we will continue to work hard with the board, with the abutters and others, if it needs to be tweaked in the public hearing process before the bylaw is presented finally to town meeting in October.
Well, I have to say that it had been my understanding that the neighbors had agreed to thirty-six units, and I was somewhat shocked to think that the, the effort to reopen this and change the whole development around would be made at this late date. I think it would be a mistake, because I think stands how the due of forty B development, and I think that the neighbors, if they push one way, will get something quite different, and they probably will end up kicking themselves, saying, you know, we had our chance, we discussed it, and what we got was good.
To that point, Alex, there are director abutters who have made it very clear to us that thirty-six units is acceptable. They are, they are fine with the unit count. They're more focused on how the site is developed. They want a high-quality site plan, gotten past the unit count. There are some who haven't, but in general terms, the people in the direct bullseye, direct the abutters, are satisfied with the thirty-six unit count.
There are a, a number of abutters who've contacted us, particularly after the last meeting, expressed concern of the thirty-six. They didn't necessarily come back and say, you know, we want something tremendously less, they're just concerned about it.
But we haven't, we have not heard that.
Well, well, I think.
At all.
Okay.
In six meetings, plus every meeting that's happened here, which is televised, we have not heard anybody say, you must reduce the unit count, or we won't support this. It's been of soft language, well, jeez, it would be great if you could think about reducing the numbers, because it feels a little high.
Bear with me for a second.
It's not, and it is, we are, been confirmed on the thirty-six units, and there has been no hard pushback on that number.
When we presented in, in, in May, a list of criteria for the developer to adhere to, we did not, we purposely did not include a unit count, because we wanted him to come back to us with something that we could respond to. We did, he came back to us in early June, I believe, and presented his plan. Subsequent to that meeting, a number of people have contacted us and suggested that the count is too high. At that meeting, there was an agreement to have a subsequent meeting, and that never took place. That subsequent.
And whose fault was that?
I, we're all willing to.
Did you schedule one?
No.
And did the developer not show up?
We are all willing to accept responsibility.
No, and we've been before you three times since.
Like you say, the developer is the one that's going to pay for it.
We've been before you three times since.
What I'm saying is that the opportunity to carry on a second-level set of conversations with the neighborhood and with the developer did not exist. Now.
And that's fine, and the answer at, at that next subsequent meeting would have been thirty-six units. That number was not going to change.
But it would have been, it would have been put on, on the table.
And it would have been dealt with in about a minute and a half.
The.
Because it was thirty-six units, that's it.
The problem, I, I think, that the town is going to have going forward with densities of this nature from a precedent-setting point of view, is that this particular lot with thirty-six units, and, and I'm the first to admit that the developer's been very receptive to us, done a very nice job of presenting materials, and we're all confident that he's going to do a good job. We're not suggesting he's not. What we are. What we are concerned about, the particular density and the precedent that this is going to set, as this committee begins to go forward with the townwide bylaw. This is a dense application of housing. And, you know, if anything comes out of this development, I would, and we would certainly hope that it would cause this board to look carefully at how it allocates this density.
Well, you say it establishes a precedent, and I have gone to extraordinary lengths to make sure that it doesn't, that it will apply to St. Pius property. And of course, there is the remote possibility that someone could assemble a similar parcel backing up on Fuller Village, but it's remote. And the precedent of 4.5 units per acre is, as I, you know, as I read this, I mean, this is an effort to avoid a 40B development of six, eight units an acre. And, you know, there's no precedent. I mean, if there is another 40B proposed, for instance, if the Carberys, if there were one proposed there, then we'd listen to the developer, and we'd assess the situation, and we wouldn't necessarily, say, 4.5 units an acre if we wanted to zone something. We'd determine something that was, was appropriate under the circumstances. This is not a precedent, in my view.
Okay, and I'm glad to hear that. My concern was only that others would come to the board saying, gee, you did 4.5 here, why don't you do 4.5 for me? But I'm glad to hear that your suggestion is that you have more control.
Look, up at, up at the KFC Hall, they want a higher density than this. And, you know, maybe that would be right. But, you know, we've got to, we want what's right for the particular circumstances.
And I agree with that. And then does that speak to the fact that the townwide bylaw would have a flexible methodology or formula by which the density gets established?
That's what we're going to discuss. And you may be, you may be very helpful to us in determining how it will be determined. But we're not there yet. This is not, this is not the, this is not the signpost for future developments. This has to do with St. Pius. And I think that, you know, I think it's, I think that for what it is, it's fine. And I have worked with Ned, and Ned has, you know, I've worked with the developer. And Ned has put a lot of input into this. And I've put a lot of input into it, and I've, the board has offered a number of comments, which, you know, we're attempting to deal with the St. Pius site. And then we're attempting to go forward, and we've established a committee that is our working group, which is going to assist us to do that. So, I don't know. I'd let this one go if I were you. But Emily?
I have, I don't know about the other members of the board, I've got a few very small comments I want to make on this draft. So on the first page, under four, change 12 to 18. That's consistent originally with what Ned wanted, rented for occupancy for terms of not less than 18 months instead of 12 months. That's agreeable to the board?
What was the number on that, Emily? Sorry. Did you say page four or number?
Page one, number four, housing types.
Second-to-last line.
Thank you.
Is that agreeable to you?
Yes.
That's agreeable to you? Okay.
And everyone nods? Okay.
Then my other two comments are both on page four. Section five, exterior lighting fixtures shall be appropriate to the architecture and be, again, dark sky compliant rather than night sky compliant. And dark and sky should both be capitalized.
Where's that?
Five.
Roman numeral B.
Okay, okay. And should be?
Dark sky compliant.
Dark. D-A-R-K.
Sky.
And is that...
And that's capitalized, is there a hyphen?
Uh, no, I don't believe there's a hyphen.
And is it in quotes?
No.
Dark sky outside of quotes.
Compliance, not capitalized.
So none of the, it's just dark sky, it's just capitalized dark sky?
Yes.
Okay.
Remove quotes, remove hyphen.
That's agreeable, isn't it?
That's agreeable?
Basically what they say.
You take that there anyway.
And then the final comment, picking up on what Ned said. Ned, did you want to add roman numeral lowercase x, second-floor windows should not directly face a butters? Is that something that you want to commit to in the zoning? Or did you, I didn't, when you were talking about it, I didn't immediately see it in the design guidelines, so I think we should...
I think that would be fine, to add that in.
Okay, so...
Second?
Second-floor windows should not directly face a butters.
Who's that, Emily?
See, add it.
Thirteen, thirteen x.
Yeah. And those are what I have.
Okay. Other comments?
I have a few comments. Number 11, open land, I'd like to add the word permeable in front of paths and walkways. This is about five lines down, roadways, but may include permeable paths and walkways.
Sounds like a good plan. What do you think, Ned?
That is fine.
Same number, small letter d, landscaped or natural state. I'd like to add the word free of invasive species. That may be implied by natural state, but this is, again, D, open land, and a P-T-D shall be owned. This is end of, end of the second line, free of invasive species after natural state.
This is under B?
Yeah, B 11D, 11D.
D as in dog, oh, okay. Or natural state of...
Free of invasive species.
That may be implied.
Free of...
So I would say after state, you would insert a comma, free of invasive species.
Free of invasive species.
Well, then it's not a natural state, then it's a landscaped. If you're managing it, it's not natural anymore.
I understand, but getting rid of the pragmatis is natural enough, isn't it?
Sure, yeah.
And then the cattails come back, and you go down there, and it's just wonderful.
Low wetlands. I bet you don't want to plant loosestrife.
I know wetlands.
Make sure they don't plant loosestrife.
Well, bamboo.
And my only other, I guess, a question would be, this is, let's see, this would be 13C, Romanet, several different locations, Romanet six. We're referring to streets, visibility from streets, and I just question whether we should be talking about streets or public way. That's related to Ned. I mean, this...
Which number, please?
Six, VI.
Sorry, this is 13C, Romanet six.
Yeah.
The, the street is intended to mean?
Public way?
The public way.
I think from the standpoint of you having streets in your project, you may want to change it to public way.
But the existing street, I think...
It's the existing.
Is, I mean, that's what we're, there is going to be a private street in this, this development, and therefore...
Yeah, it was intended that it would not, facing the, you know, it's intended, the view from Brush Hill Road.
If we say pre-existing street, do you think?
Existing, you could say the existing street.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing street.
I think that would do it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
It's fine.
Anything else, anyone? All right. Do we see a motion? We see a motion, we see a second, and all in favor. All right. So we will submit this to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Now, we have a few others, I think. Let's see if we can remember what they are. Valet parking, we're not going to do. The Selectmen want to hear from the Traffic Commission first. So we will not do that. Establishment of a master plan implementation committee.
Yes.
We have a expert in this with us tonight.
Well, I'll do my best. So you have one page with two articles on it. The first article is similar to the one, very similar to the one I submitted at our last meeting for your review. The second is a slightly different way of dealing with it, so I'll walk you through both of those. First of all, the, the purpose of the article is to set up an implementation committee that would review the master plan on a regular basis, make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, depending on whose jurisdiction those recommendations would fall into, as to what the next steps are, and then report to town meeting once a year what's been happening with the plan, what's about to happen with the plan, what the implications are. It essentially allows, because both the Planning Board, as we know, and the Board of Selectmen are very busy with day-to-day work, that comes up, this allows another committee to take the long-term review, and basically keep an eye on the master plan, given the extensive amount of resources that have gone into it. Town meeting appropriated $125,000 for both phases. There's been a lot of work by a lot of people in town. We don't want this to sit on the shelf. So after giving this to you, I'd also given it to the master plan committee. I met with the Board of Selectmen last week. I got their comments back. I revised the original article that I gave to you, and then I created a second article that's a different method of establishing the same thing. I think the second article is a better one. I think it addresses more of the comments that I received from various people. So the first article would have established this as a standing committee under the bylaws. It would have actually changed the bylaws. This second article does not change the bylaws. It establishes the committee for a 10-year period, and then asks at the end of the period, town meeting can choose to renew it, and then also the master plan implementation committee should be making a recommendation to town meeting as to whether or not the master plan needs to be updated at that point, which, for a long-term plan such as the master plan, is about a reasonable time to be asking that question. And the 10-year term allows the implementation committee to be able to judge how effective the current master plan has been over that 10-year period. Again, it's, it's a long-term plan. What it, what its recommendations are will not be completed in just one or two years. So I will read this out for people who are maybe listening in, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to appoint a master plan implementation committee for the purpose of reviewing the implementation plan within the town's master plan, establish, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D, at least twice annually, and to recommend to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen the actions necessary to implement such plan, including timing, resources, and responsibilities. Said committee is expected to report to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen at least twice annually. Said committee will report to the town meeting at least annually at the town meeting regularly scheduled in October, or if no such meeting is held, at the next annual town meeting. The report will contain the following information. A, implementation steps accomplished within the past year. B, anticipated steps to be accomplished within the next two years. And C, resources, including town meeting appropriations or other actions necessary to complete those steps. Said committee shall consist of five members to be appointed jointly by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen for terms that are renewed annually. Sorry, one little typo. One member shall be a member of the Planning Board or its designate, and a second member shall be a member of the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen or its designate. The other members may have expertise in planning, architecture, economic development, landscape, architecture, real estate, or other relevant fields. The master plan implementation committee will exist for 10 years from the date of establishment by town meeting. Such term may be extended by vote of town meeting. At the end of 10 years, said committee shall report to the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and town meeting its recommendation as to whether the master plan shall be updated under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D, and act on anything thereto. And I would greatly appreciate your support of this article.
Well, you're going to change may to shall?
I will change may to shall, yes.
That's great, thank you. And you have a typo, master, and the second-to-last line is a typo, made or planned to master plan.
Great, thank you.
The mater plan. Okay. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve, subject to the comments.
Okay. And we have a second. And all in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Now, let's see what else we have. We've done this side. Oh, we've got the, Alex, the, obviously, the townhouse that's going to the Selectmen, which will go to town meeting. It's going to go to town meeting.
The, the general townwide bylaw or development of bylaw, that's not going to go to town, town meeting at this point.
No, that's, that, that master plan committee is going to report to us. And we will then, not the master plan committee, the...
The committee we talked about.
Condominium Development Committee is going to report to us. And now, we're going to do, it would seem to me that we should refer bed and breakfast to a similar committee. I'm not sure it should be exactly the same committee, but what are your thoughts?
I was thinking about that. I think a committee is a good idea, but I would prefer that we not designate the people on the committee until after the master plan is finished. I have quite a bit of work on my plate at the moment.
I think that we should defer consideration of the, of this article until we've done that.
That'd be good.
Okay.
I'd like to finish the master plan first.
Everyone agreeable?
Yep.
Okay. Where are those zoning ones, Bill? Oh, here they are, right at the end. So one of them is to change the, change section four of the zoning bylaw. Section four of the zoning bylaw.
Is this the height and setback?
What?
Is this the height and setback?
Yes. We've got, within a height and setback which conforms with the dimensional. Now, this is, I guess that Ned could, could explain what this does. Have you seen this?
I drafted...
No, I mean, let me show you what I have drafted first.
No, I haven't seen what you've done.
Because, in fact, I drafted one on each of them. But here's the one we were just discussing.
Yes, that's the language that I have done.
All right. So we're agreed on that language?
Yes.
And, and just describe briefly what it does.
Basically, what it does is it recognizes that there are hundreds of houses substantially in the residency zone, although others, fewer in the other zones, that are pre-existing non-conforming for a number of different reasons to zoning that was passed in 1938. So zoning limits, you're limited zoning to two and a half stories in height, you limit, you have to have certain setbacks, side yard, rear yard, front yard setbacks. And many of these houses are much larger than would be buildable today, and are, and/or are either not setback as required in today's zoning. They're on very small lots. You have lots of properties out there that are 5,000 square feet, 5,500 square feet, 6,000 square feet. You have large, you have large Victorians and Federals and, and other similar houses You have large Victorians and Federals and other similar houses that were built for another day. And a lot of them are built with small rooms, with limited numbers of bathrooms, with, and when people buy homes, they realize as their children grow that they need to modify, to add bathrooms, either to add kitchen space or to add bedrooms and whatnot. And there are often cases where minor modifications to a dwelling that really have no impact on a butters need to go before the board of appeals for variance. You can't really, legally, you're probably not entitled to a variance because you can't establish a hardship associated with either the shape, the topography, or the soil conditions of the lot. And you have to, you have to establish that something within the land itself creates a hardship associated with whether or not you can be allowed to modify a dwelling. The fact that the dwelling there is there in the first place means it probably is no hardship. So it's a case where unless you get all of the neighbors, and now you have to wake up the neighborhood, to go around and show plans and get people to agree that this is going to be okay, if they all do, then the board creates a fiction of a finding of a hardship. And they do that often. They're willing to find hardship where people are on board, but really what's happening is that the dwellings are, they're being built or they're being modified, they're really in, fit the context of the neighborhood in which they're located. So what this would do is it would allow you to alter these dwelling units where, so long as you're not creating a new.
It's only a violation.
New violation. So, you know, if you have a, if you have a house that has a first-floor elevation of four feet, your unfinished basement counts as a story. If you have two stories on top of an unfinished basement.
That's the next one.
Okay. But, okay, so you can.
Do a better example, or you're going to get us confused.
Better example is.
If you have a house.
You're too close to the street.
Too.
Right in the middle of the lot, you put a little wing on, which meets all the zoning. You don't have to go to the board of appeals and say, "I want a, I need a variance because my deck is too close to the lot line."
But if you have a house, you have a house that's four feet from the property line.
Right.
And you want to put an extension off the rear because that's where the kitchen is, and you want to bump the kitchen back. You want to do it that's logical to the way the house is constructed and not come in six, four feet or six feet to avoid the side yard, so you can do it without affecting the side yard setback. So as long as you're allowed to, this would allow you to alter your dwelling, so long as you don't create a new nonconformity. So you don't.
By new nonconforming, I'm just going to ask a question to see if I understand this. What you just described is the side setback is nonconforming presently.
Correct.
So you add on to the back, and now the back setback is nonconforming?
No, you would, you could only, you couldn't go back to the point where you stepped into the rear yard setback. But if, let's say, you had, you would.
You could extend more to the side and still maintain that four-foot side?
Extend along the side.
Yes. So if I have a house like this, and that's my four-foot setback on the side, I could
build here?
Yes.
And maintain that four-foot setback?
Yes.
Okay.
My view is.
But you couldn't go back.
What this does is that if you need six feet on the side and you want to extend your kitchen, you're going to have to bump it over so it's six feet from the lot line, the zoning requirement, and then you can put your little addition on because it meets all the zoning. And it isn't, it doesn't, you know, it isn't in violation of the zoning because you bumped it in to meet the six-foot setback.
So let's say this, let's say you have a, you have a small house, and this entire side of your house is four feet from the lot line. Okay, so there's the lot line, this is four feet. If you want to come back with an addition that goes the width of the house, today you can't do that without a variance.
Because you're violating the four feet.
Right.
You're adding along here.
So you're just extending the.
But this can only go back.
Previously existing violation, more or less.
But it can't go back and create a new setback violation.
You see what I was getting at? I was saying, I was thinking you were saying you can violate, you're not, if you've already violated setbacks in any sense, then you can continue to do that, but just the one that exists.
Exactly.
Just to be clear, they're not violations, they're existing nonconformities because they predated zoning, because it is a distinction, obviously.
Yeah, no, no, the terminology, my intent was what you're saying.
It's a violation, we don't want them to be able to extend it.
I think that what you, you have actually made the point that if you extend it further back, it's no longer a nonexistent use.
Now it's a violation.
It becomes a zoning violation, so you have to bump it in, you have to take that tooth out of it, and you're set to go.
But wait, but this is allowing them not to need to do that.
No, no, they still have to do it.
They still have to do it, but you have to get a special permit.
You have to get a variance for the tooth.
No, I.
Yes.
No, not to have to get it, that's the purpose.
You're saying if you reward this, you will no longer have to get a variance for the tooth.
This is the point I'm trying to, this is, this house, this is a nonconforming use.
Yes.
It's not a zoning violation.
Correct.
If you build here, though.
You create a zoning violation.
You create a zoning violation, a new one, because this is not a zoning violation.
Right.
So if you want to put this on, you've got to keep the tooth out.
Presently, no, presently, that's right. Currently, you have to keep the tooth out.
And you don't need no variance.
We're trying to change that, yeah.
Correct, but it, but you might not get the space that you need.
And it might not look appropriate for the current house.
Appropriate to the house. So what we want to say is that you can do this under a special permit, without needing a variance, but a special permit, so long as the planning board of appeals file.
Where is that language?
Yeah, I don't see that in here.
It's not in what I had. I mean, if you have a special permit for that, that would be, let's see it.
I think the sec, there was a second provision in the draft that I gave you where I inserted language that said, in a further sentence, it said.
Well, it said, did you have it in your hand?
Yeah.
Let's take a look.
Otherwise valid pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, reconstructed, replaced, and such, if authorized by a special permit of the board of appeals, upon a finding by the board of appeals that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity.
But that's already in here, isn't it?
No, it's not.
They're to get a variance now, what he writes, is a special permit without the variance.
This is section four?
Means as long as they need it, they get it, they don't have to prove hardship.
So the board gets to decide that you're allowed to do this rather than have to get a body of decree and.
Having to go to the neighbors.
ZVA.
Well, it limits, you still have to get your butters. You can survive a special appeal permit, appeal, you can't survive a variance appeal.
And while Ned and Alex were going.
Wait a minute.
All right.
Here it says, otherwise, it says special permit right here in the zoning.
In the existing bylaw.
In the existing bylaw.
Okay, so read it out.
Okay. I don't, I wanted to say that. I'll let you go first and then read it out.
That was the Reader's Digest version.
Otherwise valid pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, reconstructed, or replaced, and such extension, alteration, reconstruction, or replacement may be used for the purpose or for a purpose substantially similar to the purpose for which the originally buildings may have been used, if authorized by a special permit from the board of appeals and subject to appropriate conditions, limitations, and safeguards stated in writing by the board of appeals and made a part thereof. And the way I read that was that, yeah, it does that.
But did that. Adding, I've got some, Bob Sheffield and I had some language that was inserted into there, which would have been upon a finding by the board of appeals that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity.
Did the existing, does the existing bylaw say, though, rebuild? In other words, if it's four feet from the line right now, forget about the new extension, it's four feet from the line right now, and you want to rebuild it, you can rebuild it four feet from the line, as opposed to adding an addition?
Get a special permit for the tooth. Now, what it says at the end here, Ned, it says, "As a basis for such a special permit, the board of appeals must be satisfied that such extension, alteration, reconstruction, or replacement, and the use to be made thereof, will not substantially increase any detrimental or injurious effect of the building or use on the neighborhood."
Right.
And it seems to me that's exactly what his finding was all about. And he was said, let's strike the last sentence so they, he could have the finding. I say, let's not put the finding in and keep the last sentence. It's just easy.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That was his, that was his language.
And if you do that, that change that I suggested, it seems to me that that's everywhere you want to go.
But the language that, as I read the language that you've, that you have adopted from what I had suggested originally, that we, that a valid pre-existing nonconforming single-family or two-family residential structure may be extended or altered as a matter of right within the existing footprint and height of the structure, or may be otherwise extended or altered where such extension or alteration does not render the structure nonconforming with respect to other requirements of the zoning bylaw. So what I'm saying, that that language says, and my intent of that language is that you have the right to do that, because you're extending an existing nonconformity, you're not creating a new nonconformity.
What are you saying, Ned?
Are you saying, Alex, that the existing bylaw already addresses it?
No, what I'm saying is that.
There's no right in the current zoning to amend, to alter a dwelling that is nonconforming if in any way you increase any nonconformity without a variance. What I'm saying is you ought to be able to invest in your property and make improvements in increasing an existing nonconformity, but not creating a new nonconformity.
And how do we last meet?
You're making a bigger nonconformity. In other words, if you had five feet of nonconformity and you've got 40 feet to go back and you could put a 40-foot wall down.
You'd have 45 feet of nonconformity.
I'd have 45 feet of nonconformity.
But to the same limit of nonconformity.
But I mean, the way I read the change as presented was that if you did that, you wouldn't have to get your special permit.
Yes.
If you made a bigger nonconformity. But this is what, I mean, I'm.
You're also doing it by means of a special permit, and you can, you can further, you can extend an existing nonconformity by special permit.
Why don't, why don't we, Ned, why don't we authorize this to be sent off to the, to the selectmen for inclusion of the warrant?
And then have a further discussion about it.
And then you and I can.
I'm fine with that.
Can I just ask, can you, as part of that, can you just make sure, you say the, you can extend, altered where such extension or alteration, we just make sure that we're not allowing them to go from four to three? That, I just want to make sure, you're saying that they can't create other nonconform, with respect to other requirements in the Milton bylaws, I just want to make sure we're careful that we're extending the four feet, not going from four to three or two, or, you know, I just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
I just want to be careful with counsel that between the to herneys.
That would be a change, well, that would be a change.
What I proposed, it really, I thought it seemed.
I think what Alex has proposed is fine, it's basically what I have.
Well, I say that it has to be within a heightened setback which conform with the dimensional requirements of the Milton zoning, oh, well, that's what we strike. And by substituting, may be otherwise extended or altered, where such extension or alteration does not render the structure nonconforming with respect to other requirements in the Milton zoning bylaws.
So I'm just worried that the word altered and saying, has to apply to the other zoning bylaws, I'm just concerned that the word alters allows, could be interpreted to mean that you can alter that nonconformity.
No, you shouldn't be able to alter.
I agree, you shouldn't be able to.
Could you say you can't increase the limit of nonconformity? Because the conformity doesn't, doesn't address whether it's five feet long in the house or 40 feet long in the house. What it addresses is a 15-foot setback. So if you say you can't increase the limit of nonconformity, the limits are the dimensions.
Yeah, you can't, well, the way I've, the way I've, I'm hearing Brian say it, is that if you've got four feet, you can't bring it into three feet.
I think Mike and I are saying the same thing. Mike and I are saying the same thing.
And I agree with that.
We just have to be careful that by saying, just by saying that you're not, you can't increase the limit of it, I don't know to what Alex's point, can you go from five feet of a four-foot violation to 45 feet?
But the, the conformity in the bylaw doesn't say when you have a side setback of 15 feet, that it can only be five feet of a house or 30 feet of a house.
That's the term by the rear setback.
But that, but then it gets into, you're still into the issue with respect to the board of appeals review of that application. Does 40, does a 40-foot extension substantially increase the injurious effect of the building on the neighborhood?
That's something to decide.
That's, yeah.
That's special.
You make a 50-foot wall.
If you do something crazy, then yes, it is a substantial.
A new alteration.
But I think that what Brian was saying about some kind of protection that you don't, because you violated the side.
Mike, does me do it, I just want to, I want counsel to weigh in on it. These two guys, I just want them to be cautious of that, that's all.
Okay, what I was wondering, Ed.
I'd like to point out that in Zone C, there's no lot coverage provision.
Yes, there is.
Only there isn't.
If there's, if there is, if there's an accessory structure on the lot, there is, in all zoning districts, there is no lot coverage restriction or gross-floor area restriction on the, with respect to a dwelling on a lot, unless you have an unattached accessory structure. And it refers to the accessory structure, and so it acts in reverse with respect to lot coverage and density. But if you have an unattached garage, and a lot of little garages that are unattached in the residency district, that you have to account for the lot coverage because there's that garage. If the garage is gone, all you have to do is comply with setback.
But there's no limit on the coverage?
No, if you don't have a garage. If you don't have an accessory structure, there is no limit, and that's, that's true today.
I can show you some examples where it would really just blew the whole intent of zoning apart, covering every inch.
No, you couldn't, because you have to pay atten, well, you might have existing nonconformities.
Cover every setback, every inch.
You have, you may have existing nonconformities where houses extend beyond all of the setbacks, but you still can't build, you can't, you, unless you have existing nonconformities with respect, with respect to setbacks, you still have to pay attention to 20-foot side, front yard, 10-foot side yard, and 30-foot rear yard.
So you're probably wondering what the map is for.
Yes.
And you remember at our last meeting, we talked about how to quantify this problem. So Alan Bishop, who is our GIS expert and is very, very good, and I have been going back and forth on this, and the parcels for this conversation that you want to pay attention to are the red parcels. And all of these red parcels are lots whose lot area is smaller than the requirement for the zoning district that it's in. So this gives you an idea of the number, and up in the little spreadsheet at the top, it gives the number of lots per district of how big the problem is, because we were, we had quite a few properties already built in Milton prior to zoning coming in. So when we talk about the number of properties that can be affected by this in town, of having to come in because they are in some way, this is one measure of nonconformity with current zoning. Alan and I will do some, over the next couple of months, we'll be showing you some other types of analysis that we can do, but this answers the question that came up at the last meeting.
There's, I've got several variance applications that I'm filing in the next 24 hours. There's a section of Milton that's called Mount Pleasant. It was built, it's right off of Pleasant Street, it's Lyman Road and all of the roads around it. 231-unit subdivision, created in 1900. Every lot is nonconforming from the, from the lot size perspective. Most of the lots are 5,000 square feet, plus or minus, there are lots that are 4,700 square feet, they've got big houses that sit on them. The neighborhoods are beautiful. I mean, it's just the way that that section of that neighborhood was built. Thatcher Plain, most of the neighborhoods on both sides of Thatcher Street going from central down towards Knights of Columbus, there were 71 lots created in one subdivision. There's only one that was not, that was conforming to current zoning. Most of the lots are 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, they've got large houses, many of them are two families, they've been converted to twos. It's just the way that large sections of the residency zone were div. It's just the way that large sections of the residency zone were developed, residency was put in place well after those areas were built. And I just, and to me, I mean, I live in a residency, and my next-door neighbor is one of the most magnificent homes in all of Milton. It is a three-story Federal built in 1780. You can't build that house today. In any, you can't build it except in a residence 2A lot because it's a three-story house. And I've got three-story Victorians that are across the street on both sides and one on the other side of the, of the Federal. You can't build those houses today. They are magnificent homes, they're beautiful homes, they have character, the street I live on has character, it's, it's close together, people get along with each other because they're close together. I just think that it, that.
But under the new cluster bylaw, you are in lock.
I know, and that will be a great little neighborhood. I just, you know, I look at zoning, if zoning was intended to do something, and I wonder whether it did, whether the unintended consequences of what it wanted to do have really, you know, affected the quality of development in this town. That's just my own opinion.
All right. Now, I wonder whether or not we should strike the word "other," but it does seem to me that this is a matter that if, you know, we had it last May in front of us and we kicked the can down the road.
It's happened in December.
Here, here we are again, and I think that we should put it on the warrant and try and figure it out at the hearing. Because we can recommend against it, and you should understand that we don't, are not quite sure about this one.
I understand it. I, I think it is definitely something that ought to be put forward and discussed, public hearing, town meeting ought to weigh in on it. It's important because it affects how neighborhoods may get modified to some degree, and I just think that.
I think as long as we're confident that whatever changes we make at the public hearing remain within the scope of what we put in front of the Board of Selection, I don't have a problem putting it forward now even though there's still some disagreement.
We could, I mean, if that's what happened and it was outside, if we say this has to go over to the spring, at least we would have done it.
Right, exactly.
Because the warrant would close two months later.
Yes, yes, and that's fair enough. So I don't, I don't have a problem with putting this one forward or the associated one.
Well, the associated one is, is easy to.
I thought it was pretty easy, actually.
I mean, the associated one is that there are some pre-1938, and I say pre-1950 because I wasn't exactly sure when they did the basement is.
Yeah, that came in later, that was not an original.
But in any event, it simply is that where your, your house is more than four feet, where your first floor starts more than four feet, then your basement is the first floor.
Right.
And since there are a lot of houses pre-1950 which have, have more than four feet, are, the first floor is more than feet, four feet above grade, and you have to then go to the zoning Board of Appeals and do all sorts of stuff, just allow those houses to have a basement, have a first floor that can be six feet above grade.
And full disclosure, my house is pre-1950 and the first floor is, I don't, I have never actually measured it, but it's probably close.
My house is pre-1950 and I have no clearance. So hopefully I don't have to disqualify myself here.
Many houses where you step up two steps to the front door.
Yeah.
And you can walk out the back.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So I'm comfortable, what I'm saying is I'm comfortable with both of these going forward to the Board of Selection.
All right, I, I'm comfortable with it. Is everyone else comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
All right, I see a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor, aye. Okay, so we're going to put them on the warrant and we're going to see if we can figure them out.
I'll have a PowerPoint presentation.
Lovely. With pictures and email.
With pictures, exactly, with your neighbor on his porch waving at people.
Mostly pictures.
Excellent.
All right, that's it, right, Bill? That's the zoning. Now we're going to have a master plan update.
All right.
With all due respect, I have to excuse myself.
That's fine, I was just going to say we're in the middle of our summer outreach. The boards are up and people should look for them at Town Hall and the library, and that's what I've got.
What about the HPP? You're working on it. I mean to send you an email on that.
Oh, fabulous, I'll look forward to it. HPP, the next step is for the Board of Selection and the Planning Board to have a joint meeting in August, so I think we need to talk to the Board of Selection about getting us on the calendar. How's that, Mike?
I did include a copy of the draft HPP.
Oh, yeah.
Did, yeah.
Yes.
Make comments, get them back from Emily.
To me?
No, yes.
I'd like to point out for Bill's understanding that on August 7th, Consulate of Aging Building, East Spilton will be the subject, East Spilton Parking Situation will be the subject at 7:00 on August 7th.
Okay, and I am going through the papers to make sure that.
May I excuse myself?
Okay, you may indeed, thanks.
I have another meeting for you, and that's August 13. That's the Yacht Club.
Oh, yes, thank you, I meant to mention that.
It's a sidewalk at the Yacht Club, and it is the ability to look at the potential reuse of the Swift Hat House.
Good.
But, is August 13, Bill?
Yes.
All right. 131 Elliott Street.
What time, Bill?
Tomorrow we'll know if the special legislation went through.
Okay.
And if it did, then who knows? We may be, we may be thinking mixed-use development before you know it. Okay, what else?
What time at the Yacht Club?
I'm at the Yacht Club.
The Yacht Club, 6:30 at the Yacht Club.
PM.
All right.
PM.
We have a motion to adjourn on the table and seconded, all in favor, aye. We are adjourned.